So take your break. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 24th, 2016, the regular meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Lord God, wonderful counselor, thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon our city. We know your word allows us to enter into this new season to build upon the good news and the victory of the past. We ask for your spiritual guidance in meeting new challenges and opportunities for our city. Open our hearts, our minds, and eyes to continue to give us clarity and wisdom in meeting the desires of our citizens. Continue to strengthen our bridge of communication between our council, our communities, and our staff. Place a hedge of protection around our police, fire, and our military, serving throughout the world. In your name, amen. We have two communication items tonight. The first item is Awafria High School District Superintendent, Dr. Dennis Runyon. Dr. Runyon will present an update on the recent activities and accomplishments throughout the district, and we look so forward to it. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's wonderful to be here this evening. I have some information to share with you. There's two packets you may or may not have this evening. I know Lauren's been sick recently. And this is a newsletter that came out and is available. It'll be shortly with you if you don't have it today when she gets back. And tonight I did bring along a synopsis. We pulled this from the annual report for you. Once the annual report is complete, we'll also make that available. We'll get copies over. But both of these, the newsletter and the synopsis from the annual report, will give you some valuable information about district programs and things that we have going. On this newsletter, I did want to mention that thanks to the passage of 123, we've been able to incorporate a range of technology in our schools that we didn't previously have, also digital textbooks. Those are two significant things tonight that I just want to make sure you are aware of, that the passage of 123 did assist us with, and it's something for the kids that has been very much needed, so we're excited about that. Along with that, I just want to share tonight a couple of things. First of all, how much we appreciate the passage of the recent bond. I can tell you personally, it's one of the most difficult challenges I face as a superintendent. And thank you to your community and to Avondale and Buckeye. We're two-for-two, and just, I can't express to you how much we appreciate the support of our community for your public schools, and we're going to do our very best. A couple of highlights recently that I can share with you is since 2009, we've had a 9% increase in the graduation rate of our students. We're approximately 10% above the state average.[213.73][213.73](APPLAUSE). We also have, I think this is nationally significant, but we have a 1.5% dropout rate, which is about the lowest you're going to find if you do your research in Arizona. So those are just two small highlights. There'll be a lot more in the annual report you can look at. I know when we talk, you love the CTE programs. You know there's new centers that have opened here in the West Valley off of Verado Way, some program opportunities for our students. So there's a lot of good things going on there. I do have some other information I want to share with you tonight. If I could walk over here, I just want to, I'm supposed to turn this on? I'll try that. I think it's working. Look, it worked.[254.76][254.76](LAUGHING). I know you can't see this too well in the audience, but I wanted to announce tonight for the first time publicly that along with the bond, we've completed the purchase of the property for High School Five, and we also have all of our drawings and all of our work we've worked the last 18 months. I'd like to thank our staff, our board member, Ms. Maxine Hill, who is here tonight in her help. Tom Huffman is overseeing our operations and has been involved in the planning for High School Five. There's good news and interesting news, and there's news that you might say, oh, that's interesting. So I do want to share with you, when we bought the property and when we looked at our demographic study, the location of this high school is just outside of Goodyear. So it's not, it's not in any of the counties, so it's unincorporated. It's about a block from Litchfield Park property. It's about a block from Buckeye. It's about a block from Goodyear, but it's just outside. If you go on the 303 corridor out to the end of Bethany Home Road in Waddell, it's right there at the end of that track, and there's a number of developments going in out there. So we are very excited. I can tell you, you know, I hope transparently, that the main reason that that was the location, number one, was our population growth out there and the developments that are being planned, as you may be aware already, as well as the property costs within the cities, both Buckeye and Goodyear. The price was about twice as high looking at property values, and the closer you get, obviously, to the 303, the closer you get to Highway 10, it gets a little more pricey and expensive. So I hope that with our partnership, you can understand that this provides us an opportunity to maximize the amount of acreage we could get for the high school at a cost that was good for the community. That doesn't change our partnership. That doesn't change the opportunity for kids to use these programs. There's going to be wonderful opportunities for our kids all across, as well as Goodyear. So we look forward to the development. We're having a groundbreaking on January 12th, and I just wanted you to know that invitations Tom is working on will be coming to you guys. I believe it's at 1 o'clock on January 12th, and you will be invited out as our partners to join us and learn more about that. A couple of quick things about High School Five. We have been working for 18 months on the design and working on the studying educational learning environments and the things that we can do to maximize this campus and what it can be. Also, the things we've learned in this research will be utilized at our other campuses, so when we renovate, when we add, we'll be able to remodel around the things that we've been learning about, the most constructive learning environments available for our students. We went far and wide to research this work. We went to the D-School at Stanford University. We went and visited the Google Center up in Washington, University High School in San Diego. There's a lot of neat things going into this project, so I hope at some point, as we get further along with construction, we can come back and maybe share some particulars. But everything we've learned here can be adapted. It can go into Millennium. It can be utilized at Verado. It can be utilized at Desert Edge, Awafria. So we haven't forgotten or we aren't misguided around the work for our students. If these are truly the newest and best practices for kids, we want to see that in all our schools. With that said, I also wanted to mention, passage of the bond has also allowed us to do a number of projects at our current high schools. Tom's helped on this, and he's been so involved, and I want to thank him tonight. Tom, just real quickly, some of the other types of maintenance projects at the schools we've been able to accomplish with the same bond funding, just some of the things, if you wanted to come up.
Sure, thank you. Good evening. Some of the things we're doing is, is if you take the two schools that are located in Goodyear, Millennium High School and Desert Edge High School, complete flooring renovations to start with at both those schools. Anything that was VCT or vinyl composite tile, that's all being ripped out and going with polished concrete. All the carpeting in the classrooms are being replaced. Those are two things right there that are very significant. We're also looking at several roofing-type projects, several air conditioning projects, a lot of safety and security updates to fencing, updating to systems. None of that's quite as exciting as a new high school, but there are things that, the way we're funded from the state, are very difficult to do without the passage of the bond, so that's why that is so appreciated.
A couple other pieces with that I did want to share with you again. This is kind of historical and great for Goodyear and the community. We did get funding from the state. The state did come through with $33 million for High School Five, so that allowed us to do many of these projects. We are phasing the bond sale, so there'll be three sales. We've only done the first one to purchase the land and for the architectural work on High School Five. But again, I just want to say to you, this is the first high school that the state's partnered on since before 2008. So again, I think that's great. I just want to share with you that it tells the local community that the state was listening. A lot of lobbying went in. You may not realize, but you are the district and the community that broke that cycle of no funding support from the state for a number of years. So I think it's a great model. It's a good partnership. I think if the state and the local groups could get together and realize, we can show what this can be. And the last thing I want to share on High School Five is that with your 303 corridor, I hope and I expect that you will take this and use it to help market the corridor, to help market businesses. This is going to be a phenomenal campus. You just turned down Bethany Home off the 303, and you're right there. You can walk across and tell your business partners, the folks you're trying to attract to this community, you can say, here's our schools and here's what we do. You have Verado out there. You have Millennium High School, obviously, is a wonderful campus, and you have an opportunity to use these facilities. The last thing also is the Innovation Center at the new high school. It's going to be your Innovation Center. It's going to be a place that you can hold meetings, bring community members. There'll be some technology there for you to do some Skyping and sending out some meeting information, kind of like you have here, but we'll be able to reach all of our campuses. They're going to be networked through the Innovation Center. So I know I said a lot. I was pretty quick here, and again, but we are excited. A lot of good things happening. I didn't even get to tell you about the digital program we have now, online learning. Our students are, 350 students are taking courses and working from home, and that's a first for your district. So we have a full complement of curriculum online. So I could come back, and we could talk some more about some of these things, but it's a very exciting time in the district, and thanks to your growth and thanks to your support, we are all very blessed to be part of this community. So I have nothing negative to say tonight, so I just, again, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's any questions. You always bring us exciting news, and tonight we had a little bit more than we expected.[699.98][699.98](LAUGHING). So I'm going to turn it over to the council. Who would like to speak first? Councilman Stip.
Well, I don't know that you've ever come before us with negative news, so I mean, that's a positive. You know, it is a plus and minus, I think, to have the high school outside of the city. We do so much with our schools from a public safety perspective and whatnot, so in a way, it actually benefits that you're not in our community, gives us a little breather. But in the same respect, we're very proud of the Awafria High School District and the quality of the schools that you bring and the education that our kids are getting. So for that, I think our partnership is invaluable. Thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo.
Again, as always, you come through for our kids. I really appreciate that. As far as locating it outside the city, I'd expect nothing less if you're getting twice the land for the same amount of price. So again, I'd do the same thing. So with that, I'm glad to see this thing's moving forward, and especially for our kids. Education's our future. You know, as an adjunct professor, you know, I see it every day. So again, hats off to you.
Vice Mayor Lortano.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work, and your enthusiasm is, every time you're here, is just absolutely amazing how much you really care. And I know it's a really hard time to do your job right now with everything, and to be able to develop that wonderful campus from just some of the programs you saw and to look at your graduation rate, that tells the story, you know? We partner, whether it's in Goodyear or not, we partner, and we sell ourselves as the West Valley, and we've got great schools, and it will be a great marketing tool. When we look at those graduation rates, that's what people look for when they want to move to these areas, our schools. So thank you.
Councilman Osborne.
Well, I echo Vice Mayor's comments about the graduation rates, because I was going to congratulate you, graduation and dropout rates. I mean, those are critical data numbers for a high school district, but it's also part of the story that our city likes to tell, you know, those corporations that want to come here. Those are very, very important things, and I really congratulate you for those kinds of scores. Fabulous campus, and Lord knows we need it. We know the numbers at Verado and at Millennium, and I'm sure that it's going to be quite innovative, and I'm excited to see it. I did get to participate in the Millennium Homecoming Parade a couple weeks ago and got to drive back through there, and it was, I haven't been there in a couple years, and so I was like, oh, my goodness. And I have to tell you, because, you know, I know this isn't technology, and I know any of those things that make a high school probably in the learning experience important, but you guys need new stadiums.[874.82][874.82](LAUGHING). So I was like, well, someday, those are still important things, and maybe we'll have to do some kind of fundraiser for you to get.
And one of the things to mention on this is the opening will be the fall of 2018, not next year. So we're going to have one more year of pretty crowded conditions, but it will improve quickly after that. But just so you know, it's the construction, and then we have a year to show the new boundaries and everything.
Oh, I'm sure. We'll take it.
But the facilities, one of the things Tom didn't get to mention is we do look at bleachers, and we are looking, it's not a full revamp, but there's some fieldhouse possibilities and some upgrades. So yes, those are important parts of the campus.
It just adds to the kids' experience and what they're proud of. And so I appreciate it, but like I said, first and foremost, those graduation rates, the dropout rate, fabulous. Thank you.
Councilman Holman.
It's always tough to be at this end of the diocese because much has been said, but I want to say a couple of things that I haven't heard, but I'd like to recognize, as Joanne did very eloquently, the dropout rates and the graduation rates, that I know that you've worked very, very hard on that, because it hasn't always been that way. And there's a great deal from me, a great deal of awe and appreciation for your skills at bringing those numbers up so effectively. But I wanted to, too, to thank not just your staff, but for your elected board. It's been kind of a tough row to fill those slots, not just in your district, but in local districts, and some of them came back and some of them have stayed, and I so appreciate them, because that's such an important role in our districts, all of our school districts. And so those people who have stepped up to serve as board members on our school boards are much to be admired, and I thank them.
And we have, interesting, we have three new board members. One has been on the board but is renewing, but because of that, we didn't have to do an election. We saved, I think, around $44,000. So that can go back to the classrooms, but that's another compliment to the community that the number of people with the open seats stepped up, so we didn't have to do that this time. Not that election's not a good thing, but it also makes it easier.
Filling the seats is so important.
Yes, the seats are filled. We are good.
And do you have a board member here tonight?
Yes, we do.
Yes, could you please bring her up and introduce her? I know she's worked very hard for many years.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Maxine Hill's here this evening, and she, I can tell you, she is always represented and always supportive of our district needs and concerns, and I share with her the same goals and aspirations together. So Maxine, I'd like to give you a few minutes.
Well, thank you very much. I think Dr. Rayner said it all. One of the things I do as a board member, I do get out and actually visit our campuses, watch our students in the various programs, and I'm more than just a seat taker, so that when we have to make the hard decisions, our communities are aware that we're doing everything in the best interest of the students, and I'll continue to do that. But thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. We're going to be round of applause.[1093.66][1093.66](APPLAUSE). Now, I do have one more, so is Councilman Campbell. Are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line, but there's nothing left to be said.
I didn't forget about you. I thought I'd give you the last moment to speak, so go ahead.
Well, thank you. I have nothing to add, and I just would like to thank Dr. Runyon for his most informative report.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate being here. We'd love to come back as we make progress, and don't forget the 12th of January, we'd love to see you at the groundbreaking.
No, we will be here, and since I sat on Mayor Stanton's educational roundtable, that dropout, that is a nice story to go back and tell him and tell the roundtable, so I really appreciate it.
And your positions were very healthy on that work.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.[1143.58][1143.58](APPLAUSE).
The next communication item is from Parks and Recreation Manager Daviside, who will update the council on the upcoming Veterans Day Tribute Event at the ballpark. David?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. It's my pleasure to provide an update on the 2016 Veterans Day Tribute Event that will be coming up in next month on Friday, November 11th, at the Goodyear Ballpark. This year's event will start off with attendees who have served in the country receiving a lanyard such as this one, which really worked well last year. It really gave them an identity. It allowed them to identify what branch of service that they had served in, and it really fostered communication amongst veterans, as well as the attendees who wanted to voice appreciation for them. So that will be coming back again this year, and I think it really kind of sets the tone for the day, and we have some volunteers from a local Girl Scout group that's going to go ahead and help give these out and make sure that all veterans have those. The event, again, will be anchored by the ever-popular Flag Garden. So if you recall, the Flag Garden is depicted in the upper-left photo, and basically, we had five branch flags that were surrounded by 50 US flags that are three-by-five, and really set the border for those that want to go ahead and plant a mini-flag, recognizing a family or a friend or a loved one's service. For those instances where they didn't have a direct relative or a family friend serving, they could write just a general note, and we made sure that those were given out to veterans throughout the event. So it's a great visual out there. We will have that up a couple days before the actual event. It does a couple things for us. It gives an identity to the event, gives notice to the people going up and down Estreya, and I think it really anchors and gives a preview of the event that's coming down the pike. So we have actually members of the Boy Scout group that are going to go ahead and help plant those mini flags. So we've reached out to a couple community groups to go ahead and get their involvement and support, and we really appreciate that. The event will also have a formal podium portion, so back again to emcee this year will be Tim Newbill, who is a retired former fire employee for the city of Goodyear. He did a great job for us, and he was kind of a no-brainer to see if he would come back and kind of do the emcee duties. So very distinguished, very articulate, and we're glad to have Tim back with us. Presenting the colors this year will be the Glendale ROTC, and followed, following that will be the Star Spangled Banner, which will again be sang by the Westar Choir. So after that, we'll have Mayor Lourd have some welcoming remarks to everyone, and then we'll kind of go ahead into our formal presentation. This year's keynote speakers is a little unique in that we've identified and reached out to a family who has a number of years in serving their country. So keynoting that for us will be retired Lieutenant Colonel David Fitzgerald, who had a very distinguished career with the US Air Force, and his wife, Dr. Donna Fitzgerald, who knows firsthand the ins and outs of being a military family and the impacts that go along with that. Both of their fathers served in the military, and actually, one of their daughters recently graduated from the Naval Academy and is in aviator school as we speak. So I think it'll be a unique and interesting perspective, hearing from the Fitzgeralds in what it's like to serve their country and some of the challenges and opportunities that that presents. After the formal podium portion is complete, we will head over to the Ballpark Plaza. We'll see the formal unveiling of the Brotherhood artwork. That'll become a permanent fixture for the ballpark entry. The main portion of the artwork has been installed and is currently under wraps. The base, however, is still currently being worked on, and actually, this morning, there were tiles that were placed on it, and I must say, seeing it firsthand, it is an outstanding piece. So very exciting, and can't wait to see that unveiled officially. In addition to the things I mentioned, there'll also be several other features and attractions. The event will offer a military-themed challenge course. So we have one of our local partners that will go ahead and put up a quasi-fitness experience for those who want to test their push-up and pull-up and sit-up ability and see how they measure up and stack up with the standards of some of the military branches. So I think that'll be a nice addition to our event.
David's going to show us.
I don't know if I'll show you, but I'll definitely cheer on those that do. So some of the other things that we'll have, charc art displays along the adjacent sidewalks. We also have the mobile museum that will be on display. The musical group Lilac Crazy, who performed last year, will once again be back with us to perform some patriotic songs. And our friends from Liberty Wildlife will hopefully be able to bring an eagle out. That picture in the lower right, that is not a stock photo. That's an actual photo from the eagle that attended the event last year. So again, very excited. We had a very successful inaugural year last year, and we hope to build upon that this year, and would encourage everyone to stop out for the free event, free parking, and come out and join us on Friday, November 11th at 2:00. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, David. Any comments from the council? Comments? No, we really appreciate all the hard work. We're looking forward to it, and I know you just built, it's going to be a little bit more than it was last year, and it grows each year with additions to it. So I appreciate the work of the staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on a non-agenda item. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I didn't ask, is anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak to the council on an item? Okay, then let's go on. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda item 6.1 and through 6.6 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approve draft minutes from a regular meeting held on September 26, 2016, and a regular meeting held on October 3, 2016. Item 6.2, reschedule the regular city council meeting normally scheduled on July 24, 2017 to July 17, 2017. The regular meeting normally scheduled on August 14, 2017 to August 21, 2017. The regular meeting normally scheduled on October 9, 2017 to October 2, 2017. The regular meeting normally scheduled on November 27, 2017 to November 20, 2017. The regular meeting normally scheduled on December 25, 2017 to December 18, 2017, and to approve the 2017 city council meeting calendar. Item 6.3, accept the Urban Area Security Initiative Chemical/Biological/Radiological/Nuclear Explosive Response Team Sustainability Enhancement Grant of $50,000 awarded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to the Goodyear Police Department, and authorize the city manager Designee to execute all documents necessary to administer the grant award, including a FY '17 budget transfer for $50,000. Item 6.4, accept a quitclaim deed from Sun DS Farms LLC, an Arizona limited liability company, for a portion of Elwood Street located west of Estreya Parkway. Item 6.5, adopt Resolution 16-1772, extending the temporary suspension of provisions in the city of Goodyear Engineering Design Standards and Policy Manual 2012 Edition that impose requirements for the installation of reclaimed water improvements, providing authorization and direction to take actions necessary to carry out intent of resolution, providing the termination of suspension and providing for an effective date. Item 6.6, approve the amendment to the final plat of the Cove at Palm Valley North, subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does council want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I then have a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lourd?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Great, thank you. We're going on to the business item, and just to remind council, refrain from asking questions. The staff presentations are complete, and there's a motion on the table. The first item is 7.1, to consider approving the budget transfers from September 1, 2016 through October 17, 2016. Budget and Research Manager Lori Wigan-Roth will present. Lori?
Hello. I don't have a presentation today. I was just going to quickly walk you through the budget transfers that are on the report that you have before you. The first is just a situation where we've identified a leaking facility in the wastewater program and looked to reprogram some projects so that they could bring forward a future budgeted project that was planned there, and will delay another project to accommodate that. In addition, we did have an unusual storm event in July that had caused an excess of $274,000 worth of damage. That is almost our entire budget to absorb an annual expense associated with casualty losses, so we're requesting a budget of $274,000, which will be offset by higher-than-anticipated reimbursements from insurance. In addition, in doing our year-end analysis, we identified an impact fee fund with about $78,000 in it that may only be used for the Cotton Lane Bridge project, and we are in an agreement to make reimbursements to Newland communities for the Cotton Lane Bridge. So we'd like to go ahead and make that expenditure this year rather than budget it and do it next year, and so this budget transfer would use that available fund balance and make that reimb- And so this budget transfer would use that available fund balance and make that reimbursement the next opportunity that we have. And then we also identified a project in some of our initial reviews that is in the CIP for Elwood, Astoria to Saraval. That's a project that the development is not going forward at this point in time, and we'd like to eliminate that project. And that would be a $320,000 reduction in the general fund budgeted expenses. And then we have a series of three budget transfers associated with the police operations facility Phase 1 project that's moving forward at this point in time. The project has come into a situation where there are some situations where it's over budget, primarily due to a contract that was awarded over multiple years experiencing inflationary costs during that period. And then addition of a bi-directional antenna, I believe it is, that was required with a code change and some other miscellaneous items. The transfers involved exceed $75,000, so require your approval. There was three transfers. One is using $49,000 from the city manager's contingency to pay for fitness equipment for the facility. Another is $25,000 from the, what's called the impound or the towing fund that may only be used for traffic-related expenses, and this would provide furnishings for the traffic operations portion of the facility. And the last is a $230,000 transfer from the general fund, using part of those savings from that $320,000 project reduction to address other cost increases in the project. And that's the summary of the transfers, and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then, could I have a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers from September 1, 2016 through October 17, 2016? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second?
I heard a motion from Councilman Holman and a second from Vice Mayor Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
And Lori, just a general question on the mechanics. The 274 for the insurance, where's that appropriation coming from? Is it within the stadium fund? And then when they get, when you get the check from the insurance company, that goes right into the general fund? How does that mechanics work?
Mayor, or Mayor, council members. The mechanics work such that we are, our goal is to charge all of the expenses that are going to be recovered through insurance to the general fund in the Risk Management Division and the Human Resources Department. So we're trying to handle that through the general fund. However, because this was an emergency situation, some of the expenses, we believe, may have been charged directly to the stadium fund already. So we wanted to leave ourselves the ability to move those resources. If some of the reimbursed expenses are in the stadium fund, we'll move those resources to the stadium fund, or we'll move those expenses to the general fund. So we just want to make sure we align the reimbursement that we receive with where the expenditures have been.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I think the 274 is going into the Risk Management Fund?
It'll go into the general fund. Risk management is funded directly out of the general fund.
And then when the actual check comes from the insurance company, it'll go into the general fund itself?
Correct.
Okay. So in essence, it's just a matter of an appropriation, aligning, to allow them to spend the money because they didn't have any money in it to start with, and when the cash comes in, it's going to cover it?
Correct. In fact, we've already received the reimbursement last week.
Any other questions? All right, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The next item in business is to consider approving the Contract Change Order Number Two to complete the construction of the police operations facilities. Assistant City Manager Keith Brown to present. Keith?
Hi, Assistant City Engineer Keith Brown. But thank you for the promotion.
Sorry about that.
Actually, no, not thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lord and council. This evening, I'm here to request approval for a $106,134 change order to increase the contract amount for the DL Withers construction contract to complete the police operations facility currently under construction. This change order is approximately a 2% increase to the original $5,454,219 DL Withers construction contract amount approved for GMP 1 and GMP 2, which brings the total revised contract amount to $5,560,353. The planning of this project began almost three years ago. In December 2014, council awarded the design to, the design contract to Architecton. DL Withers was then awarded the construction contract in November 2015, almost one year ago. During this past year, staff has worked diligently with the design and construction team members to ensure this new facility meets the needs of the police department, the city, and the citizens, while focusing on keeping the project within budget and on schedule to be completed by the end of this year. The current building, which consists of approximately 21,000 square feet, is the first of two phases for the ultimate police operations building. The current significant efforts have been made during this first phase of construction to accommodate future growth needs, such as additional wiring, plumbing, and structural to accommodate the second phase, which will actually be, portion of it will be constructed as a second story to this building. These efforts require additional expenditures during Phase 1, but will benefit the overall project when Phase 2 is constructed. City staff has worked with the designer and contractor throughout the project to reduce costs through efficiencies to stay within budget. As mentioned in the PD Operations Council presentation on July 18 earlier this year, several items have contributed to increased overall project costs. Initial land costs exceeded budget by $40,000. Overall size of the building was increased from a 20,000-square-foot building to approximately 21,000 square feet with an increased cost of approximately $178,000. And this was due primarily just to accommodate the full needs of what the police department's Phase 1 operations required. Construction costs have increased significantly over the past several years, resulting in approximately $131,000 increase in labor cost. These costs alone amount to approximately $350,000. That was an increase to what was initially envisioned and budgeted for the project. The team has worked hard to absorb these increased costs within the overall project budget. However, as we are nearing the finish line on this project, additional funding is needed to provide several of the remaining items that are important for the facility to provide the safest working environment for the city's police officers. These items include security fencing with visual screening adjacent to the east and west roadways for officer protection, primarily as they're transporting prisoners in and out of the facility. An air-water station for the police vehicles so that they can take care of their needs without needing to get out of their vehicles and do this operation in unsecured facility. A canopy over the command SWAT vehicles, and these are vehicles that are currently stored over at the, at a facility over by the Fire Station 181 and where the old fleet facility was, and just not very accessible to what the police needs are. So this will allow these vehicles to be moved close to the police, within the police operations facility, and better security and better access for the police officers. Completing a decontamination room for police officers to use if they come into contact with hazardous or biological or other materials. And landscaping and other minor items that might arise that are required during the final closeout of the construction project. The city's project team has included staff from many different city departments that have met regularly during the project to make it a success. We are excited to see this three-year effort come to a final completion in a couple of months. The major construction of the facility is complete. During the next two months, there will be a lot of activity within the building as furnishings, finished equipment, technology equipment, and other items arrive and are installed, along with finishing the items that council approves tonight. We anticipate that the facility will be completed by the end of December and be ready to be fully occupied by the police operations staff in the first part of January 2017. We're hopeful that that could occur sooner, but we're comfortable definitely with that January 2017 date. We will be scheduling a tour of the facility during the first week of December with the council, and we will keep the council informed of a final move-in date for this exciting project as we get closer to wrapping up the final items. And that concludes my presentation. I open it up for questions from council.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Could I have a motion and a second to approve the $106,134 Contract Change Order Number Two to the construction of the contract for the DL Withers construction to complete the construction of the police operations facility? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second?
I heard a motion by Councilman Stiff and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Wally?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
She could have spoken.
Well, it is so hard. I am so, Wally, I know you can hear me on a three-second delay, but I am so sympathetic to sitting wherever it is that you're sitting, listening to this. So I wanted to make sure we got to hear from you if you had anything on that. My, I think we talked about this two weeks ago, might have been three weeks ago, to get the update. And then in that, in that time for the public's information, we have received a detailed report on the changes that were necessary and some of the timing of this that we didn't hear tonight. So the council has been kind of back-briefed on this before the, before the meeting tonight. So it's not as though we're just approving a huge change order without, you know, without anything on that. But one of the things that came up a couple of weeks ago was perhaps we got into this situation because we send conflicting messages from the council. One that says, bring the project in under budget and on time, and another one that says, perhaps this is a really important project, and we should make sure that we, that we funded appropriately. And while I think that both of those may be somewhat valid, I think the other side of that is, as a council, a project like this that is so important to all of us because we have, I've been struggling with how to, how to define it, but we've not taken very good care physically of our police force and the physical working conditions that we've put them in. They have been scattered throughout the city in little cubby holes and little tiny buildings for years, for as long as I've been here, since 2001. They have never been in a place. So this building, for me as a council member, and I think for everyone else, was very, very important. And when it came, when the realization was that we were going to be unable to meet some of the things that we were looking at, or we were going to overvalue engineer this project, that perhaps that was the time when we should have started to come back to council. We may say, bring it in on time and on budget, but when a project like this is so important that when we start to recognize that, especially when we, when we start the planning three years prior with budget estimates and construction costs, that if, you know, and I look at Dr. Runyon today, he said that they've been planning that building that he's talking about for the last two years. Now, they're going to go out to bid, and he could be way off. So I think it's incumbent upon everyone, you know, to remember that these projects are very important, and when we start to run into these, these, these challenges, we need to get ahead of it and not do it at the 11th hour. I'm very thankful that we're able to get it done, that we're able to deliver this product for the police department that's very usable and that hasn't been overvalued and engineered to the point where we have an unprotected and unscreened Sallyport area. I mean, that's kind of like, you know, the basic, the basic outside stuff. So I would just encourage, you know, staff in particular, that on these types of projects, and the next one I think that comes up is going to be the, is going to be the rec center or whatever we're going to call it, that is a really important building. So today, we might think it's going to cost one thing, and when we actually start building it, when costs start getting, start coming in, I think we need to have the discussion early about funding it all the way through to the end and not shortchanging it. So I appreciate the efforts because I, you know, value engineering is really important, and it keeps us from being wasteful. But there is a, they didn't come up with the phrase penny-wise and dollar-foolish for a reason, and I think we almost got to that point with this project. So I'm glad we're able to find it, find the money, find a way to fund it, and get the police department what it is that they need.
Councilman Pizzillo?
You stole my thunder. I'm on the same page with him. You know, I just have a different perspective when it comes to mixed messages. I too wanted to come in on budget, but, with that big but in there, is if down the road we're going to get a request for additional funds, that's going to cost us twice as much or 40% more because we could have saved that money putting it together, especially when we're dealing with safety and other issues, I'd like to see it before it comes back again at another piece. So again, for those watching this, we've got, we've got a briefing on this before, and I'm in full support of what we're doing here because this is a safety issue, and not only that, it would end up coming back to us as some other port, I'm guessing it would cost us more money. So there's not a whole lot more I could add to that. You know, I was going to use penny-wise, pound-foolish. I thought that was the term. Maybe it's dollar-foolish. I'm not sure. But the point is, that's where my focus is when it comes to these projects. Let's not, you know, get to the point where we're just trying to get the budget, and we come back later on and ask for more money, which is going to cost us more. Let's get it done right to start with. So I appreciate the briefing. I appreciate that we're moving forward with these items, and thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I actually agree with Bill 100% over there. I, I think this is very important. We have not been able to join the recession, to adequately give our police the facilities they need for a growing city of our size, which not only is it not the best working conditions, it's not fair to them, and it's not safe how we've been having these men and women who protect our community work. I am very happy to see this building. The additions, I am absolutely fine with all of them. I think they're very important to safety and the quality of the facility because our citizens, we've got 75,000 people, and we're growing, and this will allow us to continue to grow and have the police force protect our city and protect our citizens. So I am 100% okay with all of these, and I'm glad it's almost done.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
Oh, thank you. I agree with all that has been said because this is probably the most important building form our police department has ever had, and we want it to be stated the art. So we were briefed on all of the changes required, the changes had to occur, and I am in support of this.
Thank you, Wally. Councilman Holman?
It's definitely one of the things that, when briefed, there was little adverse discussion because it's so important to be, not to be penny-wise and pound-foolish, and the monies that are being spent seem to fall in that category. One of the first things I did when I took my seat on council was ask the chief to give me a tour or arrange for a tour through the various police facilities. And I've been out here a very long time and had an idea, but it was a real eye-opener of the urgent need for us to do something for the officers who are doing what they are doing for us every day. So it's great that we can look to a conclusion to this project and look to a Phase 2 in the upcoming years. I passionately believe it was time for us to look after our officers and their working conditions.
Thank you. Councilman Osborne?
There's, there's really nothing more to say. I know we're all very pleased that this is finally occurring, and we support our police department. Chief Guy, you know that this is extremely important for, for your staff, for your department. And I think, you know, we really had made ourselves clear that, let us know what's going on. We're here to help because this is so, so vital. And I guess jokingly, I could say that, you know, if you have an officer that needs to go on timeout, you could threaten to send him back to the old station and, you know, put him there for a couple of days. That would, that might, you know, teach him something. But I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, I agree with what everybody has said, and I agree with, I did pick out the sentence you said, make a clear message to staff of what we want and how much we want it to go for it. And we're cloudy at points in time during this, the procedures. So we take that responsibility upon our shoulders and be more patient. Thank heavens. Thank you very much. So now we have to go on to commendations and so anybody have anything they want to say? Oh, we didn't vote yet. My golly. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? I almost didn't get this for you. Can you imagine? All right. Congratulations. That was going on. All right. Commandations, information. You want to get out, council?
All right. Just a, for the benefit of the rest of the council, the, I mean, I guess it was technically a subcommittee that was formed to create the new performance appraisal document for the city manager. We concluded our work a couple of weeks ago and I, if it's all right with Sherri and Sherilyn.
I agree with you again.
I thought it would, I thought it was really important that you, before you get that document and have a oh-my-God moment, that you at least understand where, where we're at. It is, the last few years, we have had a few items that we've all struggled to evaluate the manager on, and then the preponderance of that was given to us to complete in writing. So you found yourself writing a volume of things to go through that. We took the competencies of a city manager and put it into individual checkboxes: meets, doesn't meet, or exceeds. I mean, and they're very clear. There should really not be a circumstance when anybody says, I did not observe that. They are clearly managerial competencies. So we sat, the three of us, with the city manager and the HR director, went through it all, made sure that they were things that we can do. So when you see it, Brian, would you say there's 73 of them? Seventy-three individual competencies that for you as a, as a council member is a checking box. So you should be able to go through it relatively easily. And then there is still place for you to put comments in under each of the general setting, the general headings. So it should be, it looks like it will take forever, but it should actually, I think, move pretty quickly. But we're going to see that in a couple of weeks, and I thought we better talk about it or at least make you aware of it so when you saw it, you didn't choke to, you know, before you sat down with it. I think the, the real important thing for us is that we will be able to adequately evaluate the manager. And this year will be a little bit different because we have a whole host of goals that we set. Most of the goals that we set last year are now incorporated because they're kind of ongoing things that are incorporated into the tool. So we should really have a smaller set of, of goals toward the end, and maybe there'll be something specific that we'll look at. So I just kind of want to give everybody a heads up on that. You know, as I say, it was, it was my great idea to go and do it, so I'm taking a little bit of ownership and, and, but I, I think it was a very productive couple of meetings that we had, and I think, for me anyway, I thought it was well worth the time and go from there. So I don't know if anybody from the committee has anything they wanted to add.
Only that, I have to say, Bill, you brought tools for us. Lyman brought some tools, you brought a tool. That was very helpful and made our, it go much more quickly.
Any other comments? Councilman Fazillo.
Just general, this, there's a couple of things that, actually, I truly enjoy this job. Again, what I always call it, one of the benefits of this job is getting out in the public and seeing our volunteers. And first one was, that I really enjoyed was the Make a Difference Day kickoff on, on Saturday, because we had, what, over 200?
Well over.
Well over 200 people there. A variety of products. I'm sure the manager will give us an update, but it just brings great joy to my eyes to see how many different neighborhoods and how many young people show up for that. I mean, it was just amazing. In fact, it was so crowded in that area where we spoke, you could hardly see through the number of people. And I'm not even sure how they took that picture, there were so many of them there. But again, that, to me, that's what makes this a community and not just a collection of, of neighborhoods. That was, that was just fantastic. Also, I thought that we actually walked away from our retreat this past weekend with some sizable accomplishment from my perspective. I thought it went well, and I'm looking forward to seeing the actual summary of the notes that, that come together on that. And there was a few of us, you know, Sherri, Sherilyn and myself, that got to, what is it, about 200-plus costumes?
Over 250.
Yeah, over 200 costumes. We got the judge over at the Fall Festival, and I got a, got to take a picture of one of them there was, yes, that was priceless. I don't, I don't know how he did it. He was on stilts, green guy, but there were some really interesting ones. For some reason, seems like zombies are still very popular, but again, the turnout was fantastic, and that's a perfect example of one of the advantages we have of owning the ballpark. At least we can use it for a variety of events and bring the community out. So again, I thought it was very productive and I really enjoyed this weekend, especially getting out there and seeing how great our citizens step up when they really need some work done. It was great. Make a Difference Day.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Not to be repetitive, but I, first of all, I want to thank Bill for what he brought to the committee because that was really helpful. I agree with Bill twice today, so that's really, I'm going to have to sign that. One more quote. Make a Difference Day was absolutely wonderful to see all that, and I do want to thank the staff for spending Friday afternoon and Saturday with us for the retreat. I mean, that was great and very helpful, so thank them for taking the time. And finally, the same thing, the judging the costumes and Nathan, for your whole staff, they did an excellent job. So many people had so much fun there, and it actually got really, I don't know how many people were there because it was really crowded near the end, but it was great.
Ninety-three-hundred-and-nine.
Really? Wow. It was a great event, and I don't know how many people I, I met from Goodyear and other places to the surrounding community, so it was a great event. Everything from a pumpkin patch to the bouncy's, to a rock wall, to sponsors. It was wonderful, so.
Well, thank you for attending that. Councilman Osborne.
Okay. Thank you. Few things. Thank you to the committee for, for doing that work for Brian. I appreciate that. I, I did spend half a day in our hospital as a board member for the Board of Directors. It was very interesting. Not only is our hospital, you know, certainly an asset in our city, but it's, it's also our largest employer. So it was, it was quite exciting to spend a day with the doctors, the nurses, the staff, the directors, and walk in their shoes and see what our hospital does. And, and I have to tell our citizens, it's, you know, it's incredible, the amount of teamwork that they all go together and really discuss of what can be done to make processes better, to make patient safety and care better. And it, it's really, it's very good to see it in action, and, and I appreciated that. Got to spend an evening with Boy Scout troop and talking about leadership. They were very interested in water conservation, which was pretty cool. And of course, I, I taught them the, my traditional handshake type of, of, I guess, they knew Boy Scout handshakes. I taught them a different handshake. And went to Project Pink, and that was a fundraiser for cancer. And I did thank you, Georgia. I attended the West Valley Managers Breakfast for you while you were gone, and there was a presentation on TIF. I always mess this up, Tax Incremental Finance. Trying to get that, you know, we're the only state in the nation that does not have that. And our chiefs are here and they're alive, and they, they, they made it through our first, our neighborhood had its first block party, and we had a chili cornbread cook-off, and they were our guinea pig judges. And so, you know, I see them healthy, so that was good. And I thank you.
When did that happen?
That was, that was yesterday.
Okay.
So I thank you very much, gentlemen, for meeting our neighbors and, and being a part. The reading challenge is over in the city, and most of the, the tallying is almost done. I believe we had at least 110 classrooms participate, so we're probably in the 3,000 range of students that, that took part. And lastly, and I know, I'm sure that Brian is going to mention this, but we have to give a shout-out to Harkins, to the Indians, to Sub-Zero. We have just had a fabulous, fabulous last two weeks, and I'm, I'm thrilled, so that was...
Sherilyn.
Let me catch my breath. I'm wore me out just listening to Joanne's. I just really wanted to say thank you for, to the Recreation Department for the Fall Fest on Saturday night. Last week was a challenging week, I think, for most of us that do sit on this dais. There, I think there were gremlins messing in calendars and put everything on last week. So it was a very, very busy week, but then it, my last event was the Fall Fest and judging those wonderful, wonderful, enthusiastic people who put on a costume. The creativity was just fun. And a special thank you to Sherri's daughter for coming and translating some of the costumes. Unfortunately, my grandchildren now are older and I am completely out of the loop and would have been completely lost with the characters. So would you please comment to her that our thank you was sincere for her being a translator? Because that's kind of what it felt like. But it, it was really good, and we had a family that were like the family circus, and they, they were the first winners, including, I think the baby must have been four months or even four weeks, very small, dressed in a tiger costume in the cage. And of course, the dad was the strong man and the, the mother was the bearded lady, and it was, it, and it was really fun, and it was very creative, and it was, we thank Champion Auto Motive for sponsoring that event for us.
Okay, quick question. So are there more Trump or Hillary Clinton costumes?
None.
I don't see any either. None. So that tells you.
There were not, but there were a lot of Pokemon in their various, and that's where I was just completely, you know, it was, thank goodness Sherri's daughter was there to help us through it.
Wally, I know you're away. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the State Board of Nursing Terror Institution Administrators, as well as, we had four home tour committees, which is the committee that is raising funds for our shop with the cop. We're very busy with that right now. We also, I went to the Project Pink luncheon on Wednesday, which is the Assistance in Healthcare Raising Funds for cancer patients, and there were over 500 in attendance at that meeting, as well as the Fill and Need Committee, which is going gamebusters right now, and we're getting ready to plan all the activities to assist our families of Goodyear in Christmas time. And that's about all I did besides flying out on Friday.
Well, it sounds like you got a lot during the week. Thank you. Well, I'm the last. We didn't mention the solar celebration, so I just want to mention that. It was Pebble Creek, and they are checking to see if, if that community has the most solar panels on the rooftop than anywhere in the United States. And so they're checking that out now. We know it is in Maricopa County. They are the largest of homes that have it on. So it was, it was a great event to be at. I also attended the Icebreaker with General Leonard and Lieutenant General Robison, and part of the, I thought the special part of it was be able to tour the fire station that has been repaired or redone by the cities. All the cities came together and helped Luke Air Force Fire Station take care of, lack of what they had in that fire station. I'm not saying this very clever, but they, give me a word for it. They did, they redid the fire station, pardon me, remodeled it, but more than that, they really equipped a kitchen, so there was a lot of private partnerships. And if you have more to say about that, please go forth when, when I'm done here. So, and then I did go to the ribbon cutting of Gentle Dental that's open in Goodyear, Litchfield and McDowell, and you're all smiling about that one. Is dental ever gentle, huh? Yeah, well, anyway. And I want to thank, I want to thank council for attending events that I could not attend last week. Again, it was another one of those busy weeks, and so I was unable to meet at everything. So thank you very much. So now it's over to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I actually have for follow-up, we will get on your calendars, a January 12th groundbreaking for Awafria High School's number five. Not sure what the name is yet. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that on your calendars once we know the exact times. In reference to Luke Air Force Base, that's actually Fighter Country Partnership working with its supporters. And Fighter Country Partnership supports a mission of the men, women, and families of Luke Air Force Base and things that the military is not able to fund itself, so very, very appreciative of that. And by the way, Luke, the firefighters come outside the gates and actually provide fire service as well within the communities. Couple of announcements. One is, is back to Harkins, as I said on Saturday. The, the movie, The Accountant, who would ever think a movie like that'd be such a big draw? Maybe, oh, Doug Sandstrom. But it was, Goodyear was a top drawing of all the theaters in the country for, for opening night, so that was, that was great. Sub-Zero, so the, a few of us were a little bit late for the council retreat on Friday for good reason. Sub-Zero was honored as the Arizona's Large Manufacturer of the Year, and that was quite a, quite a great event over at the Biltmore. And as part of that, you know, Senators Flake and McCain were there as well, so it was, it's a big deal to get that honor. And we aren't aware of any other West Valley manufacturers that have gotten this award before, so we're in great company on that one. Regarding, there's been a lot said, so I won't go through a lot of what has been said, but the Make a Difference, it was 400 volunteers, and so much of the work was done on city facilities, painting wrought iron fences and block walls at a lot of our well sites. One that was a lot of fun was assembling the new playground at Estrella Vista North Park, and, and beautification of Western Avenue, so updating the islands with synthetic turf, plants, granite. And then the other is painting homes of three Goodyear senior veteran and disabled residence houses, so very much appreciated by those, those as well. And then they phyto-proofed 171 fire hydrants, repainted those, so I call them phyto-proofed, but anyway, dies for lack of second. But the, there were 13 different groups, and I won't go through all of those, but just a great outpouring of support, and it, it just is a huge event. Six Eagle Scout Candidates, and then our sponsors, special thanks to Sherwin-Williams, PepsiCo and Papa John's, that's provided the, the food to, for the volunteers throughout the day. Fall Festival, it's already been talked about, the one thing on the World Series. So October 25th and 26th, as I said on Saturday, and just for the public to know, baseball fans are invited to the Goodyear Community Ballpark to cheer on the Indians while watching the game on the big screen, and the watch party is on Tuesday, October 25th and Wednesday, the 26th. Gates open at 4:30 PM both days, and the first pitch is at 5:07. So bring a blanket, no lawn chairs, can actually go on the grass itself, or you can sit up in the stadium if you'd like. And then fans that get, attend will have a chance to win the ultimate 2017 Indians Fan Experience and other parties. But the other thing you'll be hearing on the media tomorrow, based on our press release, we're talking to KTA R today, and tomorrow Arizona Family is doing a morning report out there. Two minutes, for two minutes segments between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM, and Fox 10 will be interviewing fans starting at 4:30. So there will be attention by media crews out here. We're excited for that. Go Tribe! And then the other, since we won't have a chance to visit with council before, just a reminder, the hazardous waste drop-off event. It's a four-city partnership, so we partner with Avondale, Litchfield Park, Tollis and Goodyear. We'll actually have it at our Public Works Facility out there at the, near the wastewater treatment plant south of MC85 off of Estrella Parkway. So residents will be required to show proof of residency, and there are a variety of ways they can do that, but it is for resident, residents, residential hazardous waste only. So residents will be required to show proof of residency, and there are a variety of ways they can do that, but it is for resident, residents, residential hazardous waste only. And last thing is Gain, that's this coming, November 5th, Saturday, and there are eight neighborhoods that are part of this. So we gave you information before, just to confirm, we have Rio Paseo, Historic Goodyear, North Subdivisions, Palm Valley North, which is Phases 2 and 3, and Phase 8, Legacy Ranch 2, and Serenity and EMR. We had thought the Kenyon Trels would participate, they are not at this point, so we'll provide you updated maps so you can wind your way around the city as far as the driving routes and maps. So that's all I have, unless there, as far as reports.
Thank you. Councilman Basillo has a question.
Brian, will the PIO be putting together some type of high-level summary, press relief on the Make a Difference Day to show the participation, and even maybe a bottom line, you know, savings to the city? Because I think that's one of those good news stories that, I'm not sure whether they'll pick it up in the news, but it's one of those good news story I think would have value with a press release showing on how our citizens stepped up, the count, the projects, and the actual dollar impact. I think that would be great for the community to hear that.
Thank you for that, yes, and press releases, and also other ways that we can push out that message as well, because didn't get a chance to go through all those that contributed, and it's very impressive, so thank you, yes.
Anything else? Does anybody have anything with the city manager to report on? Request tonight anything? Okay, thank you. All right, then the next meeting will be a work session on November 7th at 5 o'clock. So with no further discussion, meeting adjourned.